It's noon, we can start, Jim.
All right, let's go to the meeting's order. Roll call, please.
Ginslinger. Here's a...
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Osterlu.
Here.
Penny. Smith.
Here.
Sonny.
Here.
Fisher. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And the agenda has been provided to us. Does anyone have a potential conflict of interest that has appeared on that agenda? Hearing none, let's move on to the agenda itself. As I mentioned, the agenda has been provided to us in the packet of information we received. Do I hear most of you approve that agenda?
No, moved and seconded.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as provided. We're going to do a roll call vote here because one of our members is telephonically included with us today, and we're required to do roll call vote. So Mark, your turn.
Osterlu.
Here.
Yep.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Here's a...
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The minutes of the previous meeting were sent in that packet of information that we've all received. Are there any additions or corrections due to those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the previous minutes be approved as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, Mark, it's your turn.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Here's a...
Yes.
Osterlu.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next meeting blanket should be for the 25th of August. Do I hear motion to approve?
25th of September.
Excuse me, September. Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir, let me make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the next meeting be set for September 25th. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Mark, your turn again.
Sonny.
Yes.
Here's a...
Yes.
Osterlu.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is a plot of lots D and C of Johnson subdivision in the northeast quarter of Section 11, Township 102 North, range 60 west of the fifth parallel Meridian, Davidson County, South Dakota, as requested by Neil Johnson. Mark, talk to us a little bit about what's going on there.
This is down on 257 and 411th, so it is outside the ETJ but within three miles of the city limits. So per codified law, has to go through both boards. They're fighting out the farmstead with the three acres, which is what their ordinance requires. So there's a variance for that portion, and then the 32 acres for the other parcel. Doesn't require variance at all for it. County planning commission approved it at their meeting this past Tuesday night. Answering questions you have, or also Jeff Bathke from Davidson County Planning and Zowing's here, if you have any questions for him at all.
Anybody got any questions? About folks from the audience, do you have any questions? Hearing now, we are ready for a motion. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the plot be approved as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Mark, your turn.
Osterlu.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes.
Here's a...
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is a motion to rezone, and we need a motion to rezone Jensen and Capital and Developmental LLC of the southeast corner of Urbana Drive and East Spruce Street. Jensen Capital and Development LLC is requesting the following legal description as lot 23 of Starlight Estates in the northwest quarter of Section 34, Township 103 North, range 60 west of the fifth parallel Meridian, Davidson County, South Dakota. Need changed from urban development district to highway business district, and the official zoning map be changed to reflect the same. It's at the southeast corner of Urban Urbana Drive and East Spruce Street. And this urban development district has plagued this commission for many years. Mark, talk to us a little bit.
Notice in the paper, neighbors were notified, signs posted. There was one letter in the paper, or excuse me, one letter in the packet that was against it. They wanted more facts for what was going on in that area. What I've been told is applicant likes to rezone it so that way they can put multifamily housing on there. For setback issues, going to highway business versus urban development will work better for him in that. Both urban development and highway business both require conditional use for multifamily housing, so that doesn't change anything. It's a setback that gives him a little more options with highway business. He plans to coming off of Spruce and not off of Urbana Drive. Applicants, do you have any questions for him, or I can answer any questions you have for me.
So there's still a conditional use for upstanding?
Yes. Once the rezone, if the rezone goes through, then you have to apply for the conditional use to go with this. And looking in the area, it is contiguous with highway business right here. You have industrial across the street, and you have the urban development that's housing, and then this whole housing area is a PUD down there. Talked about maybe putting it into the PUD, but same thing. The setbacks won't work well for him going into the PUD versus the highway business.
Introduce yourself to us, please.
Jeremy Jensen, owner of the property. And we're looking at continuing with our multifamily townhome projects in that area, similar to what we're doing on 20th and 21st. So it'd be 10 units total, essentially leased rental townhome units. We see quite a demand for. This is where we'd like to do our next property.
Must be, because we've seen quite a few requests for something like this before. Any questions from the folks here at the table?
What was the letter against? I guess I hadn't seen that, but just what were the concerns against?
They had concerns about Urbana Drive being used for commercial road as opposed to just being a residential road, which you're going to come and off of Spruce agreed anyway for that.
Correct.
That was their concern about it.
Yeah, that would essentially be to Urbana would be backyard on that site plan, so yeah, there wouldn't be any traffic on Urbana.
Mark, is a plan required conditional use?
Conditional use will... Because it'll go to highway business, we will require a plan for that at that time, yes.
And that plan will include stuff for the city concerns?
Correct. Yep, we'll note all those concerns at that time. That'll be a condition of the approval that we would then look at in the building permit process.
Any other questions for the city folks or this gentleman? If not, let's go to the audience. Any questions there? I guess we're ready for a motion, so do I hear a second? Here's a, thank you, second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing no discussion on the motion. Motion is to send the rezone, our idea of the rezone, to the city council. So, Mark, it's your turn for some voting.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Here's a...
Yes.
Osterlu.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Let's move on to the next item. A variance permit for Jason and Summer Greenway. They have applied for a variance permit for a front yard setback of 25 feet versus 35 feet for the northwest corner of the garage due to radius corner intersection to line up with neighbors' houses located at 5740 Island Court, legally described as Lot 47, Island First Edition, a subdivision of the southeast corner quarter of Section 31, Township 104 North, range 60 west of the fifth parallel Meridian, City of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota. Said real property is his own urban development district. Mark, talk to us. I see we have a map in our information.
Yep, it was, neighbors were notified, published in the paper, signs posted. There were two responses in the packet that were for it. You all received an email over the weekend from Mr. Bathke for his disapproval with it. And I also printed that out and put it in front of all of you this morning. Larry, you would've got that same email on Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So applicant came in with the rounded corner for the radius of the road. They're trying to line up the house with the existing houses up to the south, and cuts into that corner there for going down to the 25 versus the 35 feet. Applicants here, if you have any questions for him, or I can answer any questions you have for me.
Can you go back to that other picture of the houses for me?
This one?
Yeah. So in other words, he's trying to line the front of his house up?
The garage, yep. Line the garage is up together.
Yep. Okay. Mark.
Is the variance exclusive then to the garage?
The variance would be exclusive to what they're doing right now. If they were to do anything further to go move forward with anything else, they'd have to come in for a new variance for that.
And he's going to come off of his over in there somewhere?
Yeah, he'll be coming off of Island Court for his driveway. At the beginning of it, he starts right about the 35 feet, but then once that curve continues on to the 35-foot setback, that's where the variance portion comes in right there.
And if he moves further to, let's see, would be towards, I can't read this street. East. Oh, yeah, I guess this direction there. He wouldn't line up with the rest of the guys on that street, would he?
He wouldn't line up with them, no, but there may be room enough to push everything back, and they'd have to have a surveyor come out to see if the site could fit on there without requesting the variance, or they might have to get a variance for just barely coming into the 20-foot side or coming off to the south for a foot or two to shift it all a little bit. These are just hand drawn in by me, not 100% accurate. They'd have to get a surveyor to verify that portion of it. This was just the plan brought to me.
Mark, my concern with that is we're looking at giving a 10-foot variance for a property that might not need a variance at all. I don't know if I agree with that.
Yeah, it's possible. People ask for variances for different things all the time that we approve as well, so.
It looks like it could be voted, but then you'd have the driveway coming off the main road. You don't want that at all, so he's trying to...
Well, it'd just be a longer driveway off of Island Court and not coming off Canal.
Right.
They're still going to face the same direction.
And there could be, this is Jersey, there could be a little bit of a compromise where he's trying to line the houses up and then kind of stay away from the house across the street a little bit more. Maybe the variance is tight, it's empty or something. Yeah, maybe there's something in between that might work and resolve all these.
Any other comments or questions?
Is there any concern from the city about driveway access or curricles and visual structures?
At this time, no, we don't see any concerns with the house position as requested.
Any other questions? Members of the audience, have you got any comments on this?
Good.
Jeff Bathke, I live across the street. I'd just like to point out a few things that you've all received my email explaining everything in detail, but allowing this variance 10 feet closer to my property would block a portion of the view of the lake, and that's how I positioned my house was for that view. To build inside the setbacks of the home and block my view, that's on me. But to come inside that variance, I don't believe that encroachment is okay. It also blocks the site triangle for the corner of Island Court and Canal Circle. A variance is supposed to be approved for hardship. When it's new construction, new dirt, new development, there really shouldn't be any variances because you can design your home to fit the lots you have or you buy more land. This also doesn't comply with the city ordinance on building codes, which is... And it doesn't conform with the covenants on our development also. Lot 47, my biggest problem with this is lot 47 is only 111 feet wide. City code requires every one of these lots to be 150 feet wide. Only four of them have ever been approved that meet the 150 feet. So all the rest of the lots in that entire development were approved by both boards and didn't meet the minimum standard of 150 feet wide. That's why you're seeing variances requests come on this development, is it wasn't, they're not plattered right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point?
I'm old enough to be authorized for a teleprompter, but allow me to use my notes instead. And I've never wanted to debate a lawyer, and I think I might have a person that I'd rather debate a lawyer than that person. He's the best we've got. The variance, we've talked about the corner of the garage, and it is that. I think, and I don't want to speak for the builder, and one builder is here, but I think they need about seven or eight feet. And I, as I started to understand this in the last week, I hate to see them throw away that third stall of their garage. Oh, I'm Chuck Macheski, I'm the developer out there, pardon me. Because we're trying to do bigger is better, smaller is cheaper, less comps. And I differ with lots of variances. I think we've had one other one. This is 111 feet wide. Bottom line, I think to do what they want to do with their house, and SPN designed this, and I think they did a great job with the rounded corner. There's no... This house with the variance or not without the variance will be built on a plateau there, and navigating the corner won't be a difference because the house is going to sit on the plateau. And the people will drive around the knob, if you would. If we were there, and I wish we were, it won't be a safety thing either way. They're going to drive around the knob. And if we push repositioning of the house, there's a 20-foot setback there, east of there, that could come into play. And if we don't do the variance of seven feet, eight feet, I think Mark suggested 10, because it's safe if you got to have seven and a half. Be better to be safe and not miss it by six inches, according to John. So that's the reason for the 10. If we were residential lake, RL, like I tried to do a couple of years ago, but had the objection from the same source, we had to stay urban development. And urban development seems like it's weird sometimes. I'm talking about 25 versus 35. RL is 25, urban development is 35, in the front. But we are urban development, so 35 is what we're dealing with. I hope these folks get to build their house as designed because it'll be a nicer house rather than a lesser house, just the garage alone. Pushing it towards the lake, I don't like it as a developer because it'll look weird. And I differ with the view from across the street too, because whether it's with the variance or without it, there's going to be a straight line towards the lake there, and the view isn't going to change from across the street. So I hope, if you have any questions, Wes is the builder represented here now. Lyle, his mouthpiece, has had to work today at the hospital, and he's a very good speaker, as the rest of us aren't. The Greenways are here. I'd like to have them have a chance to answer any questions you have because I think the more your questions happen, the more this becomes very simple and a no-brainer to me. So I'll stop there, and if you have any questions, please ask any of the three of us. Attaboy.
I will note that urban development is 35, residential lake is still 30, so it would still require the variance if it were a 30-foot setback for RL. If it's on the lakeside itself, you switch it around, so your front yard is 35, rear would be 30. But this would be still a 30-foot.
I often come to these meetings and learn things.
And I'm not the one that came up with the measurements for what they need for a variance. They bring that in and request it, I just put down what they request.
And that was hearsay when we were discussing the seven or eight or 10. I was wrong because I heard hearsay as to the suggestion of 10 feet, and I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Wes Morgan, one of the builders. We talked about getting, I think we only need an eight. We went for 10, and I think we can... We want to line up with the front of the houses, but I think if we went back two feet would help, even with the, help us on the variance a little bit there. I don't think you see the two foot looking across if you, when, if they're not matched up perfectly with the garages, but it would look a lot, lot better than going back eight. You go back eight, it's going to look, it's going to look odd. And...
Well, if you move it off, you're going to run into the backyard setback.
We're going to run into a variance problem with the back corner.
Yeah.
And... The... And this is from the property line. I think the measurements are from the property line, not from the street, which would be another 12 feet.
Yeah.
So... That's all I got.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I'm Jason Greenway, I'm here with my wife Summer. We're the ones looking to build a house. We just moved back here. Anyway, I guess what I'd have to say echoes what the other two gentlemen have said with, we're just trying to do the neighborly thing here, keep our house lined up with our two neighbors of the south. I understand the concern with the view. You know, there's nothing we can do about a view across from us to the west. If you go back down to the other photo on there, sorry, that one, yep. Our view of the lake here would be kind of to the northeast where the sign butts into the property there, the development sign. And, you know, I personally think directly to the west there, coming off, the view would be generally the same. I don't know that our roofline or positioning would affect any view. Our biggest concern is being neighborly to the two folks of the south. If we push it off to the east and we block their view, now we've upset people for essentially no reason. I understand there could be some concern on the traffic. It was noted that they didn't feel there was. I would tend to agree, just with traffic coming off to the right from Island Court there, there shouldn't be any oncoming traffic coming around the corner or anything of that nature. So I guess we're just hoping to be able to build as-is on the diagram there. If you have any other questions. I guess I'd also note the comment on building the house to the property. Our house is the smallest square footage wise on the street there, so we're not building an excessively large house. We're just slightly larger than the minimum required in the development, so we're not pushing it extra-large or anything of that nature to try and get in anybody's way. We'd just like to meet the minimum requirements there and then get it positioned on the property in line with the other folks to keep the neighborhood looking as nice as it can.
Thank you. Builder. How tall side walls are you talking about here? How tall are the side walls that you're talking about here?
Nine foot, 10-foot total from the ground.
Mark, could you clarify front yard setback again in both RL and urban development?
Yeah, urban development is 35 foot, and RL, on the roadside that isn't the lakeside is 30. If it's the lakeside, front yard would be the 35 on the lake. So if this were, if this were urban development, it'd be 30-foot setback. Or, excuse me, if this were residential lake, it'd be a 30-foot setback that would be required.
Ordinance says 35.
Yeah, for urban development, 35. You said if it was the RL like you want, it would be 30. It's not on the lakeside though. That, it flips around. Your front yard flips.
Okay.
Yeah. They'd still...
Regardless, it's not 25.
Right, they'd still need a variance if it were 30 feet for the RL zoning portion of it. But if it's urban development, what's 35?
Any other comments or questions?
Well, this is Jersey. I don't know the specifics about the actual house plan, but just looking at the outline of the building in blue on the site plan, to me, a real simple solution is flip the thing 180 degrees and we wouldn't be having this conversation. That's the way I see it. And if it did, be flipped back a couple of feet, no big deal. So I think there's some design solutions that are real simple. And as an architect, I solve problems every day on buildings, and there's probably 100 solutions to this problem. I don't know all the details of it, but I think there's some simple solutions where everyone would be happy about the outcome of it. I really do. So I'm not really in favor of granting the variance right now. That's just my personal thoughts.
Larry, this is John, if they flip it 180, then they're going to need their side for their backyard setback.
The backyard, well, the part that, the part that jogs out towards the curb, I was thinking that would be recessed back to where the other line, that's... Well, like I said, I don't know the details of the plan, but I think, I think there's some things that could be done where you're trying to get the little portion of the building that's outside that setback line back within that line to flip it 180 degrees. I think that, I think that would do it. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't, that's just visually, be just looking at it real quick.
If you're doing 180-degree flip, then your driveway would be coming off of North Harmon, and the city does not want any driveways coming off North Harmon there.
Driveways?
Oh, maybe, maybe I'm telling you wrong, not 180, maybe...
Just 90?
Well, I'm, I'm just, we just flip the building over. It's not, we're not, we're the house part, Canal Circle, the 20-foot mark. Maybe I described that wrong.
In the north of the selling direction.
Yeah. Flip it in the north and south direction, that's correct. Anyway, it's just, I mean, just, usually looking at it, it would seem like that's some adjustment could be made with that. That's all. It just looks like there's so much open land there that is within the building limits that it's an easy, to me, it's an easy problem to solve sign-wise without even knowing anything about the house and the garage. You know, maybe there's things I don't understand totally. It really wouldn't make the house less of what it could possibly be. And then that, that way doing that, then everyone else is satisfied with the setbacks and all that. and all that kind of stuff. I, I just, I just think there's other options other than the variance.
Okay? Anybody else?
So SPN designed the location of the house to drive?
Well, they, they would've sized the lot, but I think SPN did a, uh, elevation record for this property, and I believe they showed this layout, this exact layout, all within the property. I wasn't involved with that directly, so I'm not sure of the, uh, the details of that.
And this, and this house is on an hole? So Larry's idea of mirroring it may not apply with grades or cause additional costs for grading?
Well, the high side of that lot, I believe, is on the south side, so moving to the south would probably result in gentler grades coming up into the drive.
Mark, go back to the picture of the houses and, and the vacant lot, please. So, so, Mr. Greenway, your drug was probably going to come in on that picture about right where that red dot is, is it not?
Correct. And unless somebody knows something different, I believe the high side of the lot would be the east side. Um, the north side seems slightly higher than the south side. It's gener- gradually slopes, but it's relatively flat north to south. It's got a slope west to east going up.
All right, further discussion. If we're not hearing any more discussion, I'm looking for a motion. Go ahead, sir.
I'll second.
It has moved and moved, and seconded that the variance be approved. Discussion on the motion. Hearing them? Mark, your turn.
Sonny?
No.
Jersey?
No.
Osterloo?
Yes.
Schmitz?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion carried, it'll be heard in front of the council next Monday night.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before this body at this time? If you need to address the board on an item that was not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. As I see no one coming to the podium, this meeting is, uh...
Oh. Me, yeah.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see you come, wait a minute.
Well, I didn't really want to be the first one. Um, my name is Stacy Harris, and I just wanted to come and voice opposition to the potential proposal of, uh, annexing the, uh, northeast quarter, including irregular tract one, section 36, um, tract 104, range 61 west, um, for a potential gun range, uh, or the proposed location of a gun range on 406th Avenue. We did hear that there may be a potential, as it would be contiguous, um, we did propose to, to the Davidson County planning and zoning, um, in which the motion, um, had a unanimous no vote. However, with it being contiguous, there is a possibility that the city could look at annexing that, and we want to voice our concern, um, in continuous opposition that based on the number of residents, homes, for different reasons, um, that we continue to voice our opposition.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? I will watch more closely now.
Thank you.
There's no other comments? Now we're adjourned.